Meeting to order, regular school committee meeting of May 20th, 2019. Mr. Horgan, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. School committee, resource committee report.
Nothing, nothing at this time.
Mr. Stevens, nothing, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, school building needs?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time, any questions? Policy committee. Ms. Gregan.
Um, we are, uh, we're all set for right now, we will plan another meeting, probably for June, after all the graduation, so Aiden and I will talk after.
Questions, concerns? Seeing none, student support committee. Ms. Lavelle Pierce is not here, there will be no report. School personnel committee. Have nothing to report, although the superintendent, I believe, will be making some announcements that we're all, uh, very, very excited about. Executive committee, nothing to report. And, without further ado, the student reports.
All right, so, we recently had two speakers come in who were part of the posse program, so they spoke with us, um, a select number of few, I think around, like, what, thirty students?
Thirty or forty students.
Thirty, forty students, from the entire junior class, about posse, so what it was. They mentioned that it was a really prestigious and comprehensive college access and youth leadership representative program, um, throughout the country, and then, they said that they partner up with top-ranked colleges and send students to these schools and teams, or in posses, to kind of, um, support each other and excel as scholars and leaders on campus. Uh, they also mentioned, and like, answered a lot of our questions, as into why, um, a student should choose posse over other scholarship opportunities, and what are the benefits of the posse program. Also, they asked, I mean, we, they answered to our question, what is posse looking for? So if, do students need to have straight A's, what type of, you know, requirements do they need to have to be entered, and even like, how scholarships, how much the scholarships were. Uh, we also had, uh, the FHS class of 2019, Gold F Scholars, so we had the Scholars banquet, and we honored thirty-six members who worked hard to earn a 3.7 GPA or higher throughout the years in high school, so, we had them get like, the awards and everything, and had that settled. And then, in our Student Advisory Council, we held, um, we'd mentioned and we discussed some topics such as dress code, so uniforms, we discussed how, um, if we should have uniforms in the school, and then, a lot of students agreed with it, a lot of students disagreed. We also mentioned, um, what is the best way to communicate with students. So we found out that social media platforms, so like, having a Twitter account, we have that for our Pittsburgh High School, so we mentioned even having like, an Instagram account to make it public, so messages and events get out more, and we also discussed the weekly emails that Mr. Roach, our principal, sends out ahead of time on Sundays, so that, um, any upcoming events, any recent events, acknowledgements, they're all like, covered. Um, another thing was, ideas to improve school culture in 2020, and a reflection on what happened in this entire school year of 2019, and ideas moving on forward to 2020. So, we discussed the headphone policy we covered in this meeting, the past two meetings, and how that worked with students, and even promoting events, so.
And then, so, the seniors graduate in about two weeks, so the final exams begin tomorrow for the seniors, and they go all the way to the end of the week, uh, they'll be collecting Chromebooks and that such, and graduation rehearsals will begin on Thursday, and we'll hope it will be outside of Crocker Field instead of inside. Uh, MCAS starts tomorrow, uh, for all 10th graders, some 11th graders, and this will be the first time that MCAS is taken on the computer for the high schoolers, so they'll be taking it on their Chromebooks, um, so that's a good thing, because the Chromebooks do come in handy. Uh, we started a free after-school karate program at FHS, uh, it's just, uh, remainders on Tuesday after school, and if anybody's interested, they go to Mr. Roach, and it's a pretty cool little thing. And upcoming events, we have the Rotary Awards Dinner, and one of our teachers, Ms. Marrero, the biology teacher, is being presented as the Teacher of the Year Award, and then we have the Alumni Awards, Senior Awards Night, and then, graduation, May 31st, at Crocker Field, and also, uh, lastly, Karate for Kids had their golf tournament this weekend, and we raised a little over $3,000, so I'm very proud of that.
Good job.
Wow, terrific.
And, if that includes anything, so I'm gonna pass it on to Hallie Gregan, she says she has something to say.
Yeah, um, tha- thank you, um, guys. So, I went to the Health Advisory Council at the high school last week, this is a quarterly meeting which Pam Rivers organizes with so many members of the community, and it really brings home how Pittsburgh Public Schools is really entwined with, um, every other agency we have, from Mount Wauchoo-Zit, to MOC, to Loc, to UMass Memorial, and I want to say that the Health Occupation Students of America organization group at the high school is booming. It went from eight students to thirteen. We have students right now who are working as CNAs, they're still in school, they're planning to go to Mount Wauchoo-Zit, and some of them have the plan, you know, to become registered nurses after the program at Pittsburgh State. So, this is a real option for our students, the, um, health occupations up at the high school, and I just wanted to put that out there, so that, you know, and, hello, Mrs. Fisher, um, just, just to reiterate, um, you know, what a positive program this is, and, um, you know, how, how many, um, how many, like, really, are s-
Yes. I think this is the first for a school committee.
All right.
And she's gonna stay with me, but she's faster than I am if she gets loose.
Yes. So let me, let me, uh, oh, all right, I know Brady, it's good.
He's all right, he's.
So, wow. So this is our friend Helen Donlin, who is a longtime member of Be Positive and Therapause. Some of you, I know, met her wonderful Great Dane Fiona, who did amazing work in Learning Perspectives at Rhinegold, and it-
Yeah, that's what I like, it, he's like, I'm just gonna hold him.
Okay.
Yeah, he's all right.
He's a wiggly boy, I know, well, it's different when you're on TV. Anyway, uh-
Oh, is it?
So unfortunately, Fiona passed away last year, in November, and that, that made a really, uh, just a really big dent in all of our hearts. Um, Helen, being a trooper, now has a bunny, Brady Bunny.
Yeah.
So, um-
I'm sure you all noticed, same colors as Fiona, only this one has longer ears, although Fiona's floppy, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
She's only slightly smaller than Fiona, right?
You know, as you get all the, I, you forget things, and I forgot my hearing aids, so, so I'm saying to Sally, you got to stay with me, you know, she's my interpreter.
Yeah, so, I, I, I wanted to get the report in your package, so I'd like to say thank you to Patty for putting this together, um, I got a, a review from Angela Gill in Learning Perspectives, you will see a chart of how well children did reading to therapy pets, there's a chart on, on two of the pages that show the really dramatic, you know, dramatic results, you know, up multiple levels. Um, those are kids who do have challenges, um, in terms of being in a regular classroom, so they, they have, they're in a social and emotional setting, and the therapy pets on Monday, we have, this is our third year, completing every Monday. We also have a report from Kathy Walker, Guidance Counselor at South Street, we work with kids there who have lost parents, who are in foster care, who are homeless, who have had some very difficult things happen in their lives, and the pet therapy on Wednesdays at noon is extended for, uh, grades two, three, and four, so we see kids grade by grade, and they have come to really moderate and modulate their, um, you know, their, their behaviors, because everyone wants to go to pet therapy. The, um, report, I, on the very back page, you'll see a selection of all of our pets, um, and I, I will had to put Fiona in there as well, with Helen with Fiona, and Helen with Brady Bunny, you can see from the expressions on the kids, and the, and those photographs, that, that's just, you know, a, a small overview of the instant joy. What pet therapy does, is it lowers your blood pressure, it lowers the cortisol levels, which is your stress hormone, like the fight or flight, and kids who have some, uh, dysregulation as, as part of their makeup, get flooded, their brains get flooded with serotonin and, um, you know, the feel-good hormones, um, the dopamine, um, and that has made a difference when kids go back to class, and that makes a difference as kids move forward in school. We are looking to begin a pet therapy program at Long Joe Middle School, because some parents asked us about it, a lot of kids from Rhinegold go to Long Joe, so, we are expanding, and on page two, you can see, that I, I did the best I could do to add up our hours, um, 230 hours donated to Pittsburgh Public Schools, the number of pet teams, uh, more than doubled in some cases, so, we've got- So we've got six, six dog teams, well, five act, five working dog teams. We have three cat teams. It's great to have some more cats there. And we have a rabbit, Helen with her rabbit. So let me ask Helen, what, what do you like about doing pet therapy?
I enjoy the kids. I really enjoy the kids. I have 14 grandchildren, but they're not around. And I go into the school and it's like, ooh, you know, it's like they're not saying, ooh, there's Helen, but they'd be saying, oh, there's Fiona, and now it's, ooh, there's Brady. And he's, today it was really exciting. The kids read, they really read to them, you know, and so their reward is, once they finish reading, then they can pat it. And one of the kids today, she just came up and she's patting him, and she's, woo, I never patted a rabbit before. She was the cutest thing. She's just, woo, you know, it's so neat. So I enjoy the whole thing. I, I love the kids reading to me, you know, I don't see my grandkids that often. So it's like, woo, something I can do on Mondays, so it's, it's great for me.
So you get as much out of it as they do? Oh, yeah.
I forgot my hearing aid.
You get as much out of it as they do.
I absolutely, I do.
You deserve it, Helen.
And you know what's going to happen? They're not going to be in school next week. I'm going to miss it, you know, on Monday, so it's like, well, we'll go two weeks, you know.
Just a couple of weeks, and we'll be back in September.
I can't, I forgot. Well, we'll be, see, you get old, you'll get my age at some point.
Just had a birthday, I'll be a year older today.
He's a year closer tonight.
Yeah, but I'm in my eighties, so, no, I know, so there.
Don't say that.
I am in my eighties. And see, you're not anywhere near there, so.
Okay.
The whole different deal. So any questions from everyone? This is, we've been presenting about pets for five years, I mean, getting, bringing pets in, so you guys get this, Mr. Waffles is here for the duration of the meeting.
He's all worked up, I can tell.
Yeah, yeah, he's all excited.
They actually, they like each other, they stare at each other, they have a.
Sally, I, really, this, this is probably something for Paula too, and for Bob. This has become a critical curriculum piece to the school system in, in Pittsburgh. I mean, it's, really, it, this is, I mean, I'm reading your, your, the pamphlet, and the, this is pretty impressive stuff. You really, you both should be certainly congratulated, and, and the teams as well, all the teams.
The, the teams range from Angela Layley, who is a senior over at Parker Charter School, to Helen, who is, is, has some seasoning to her. And we've got new pet teams coming, coming in. So we're always looking for pet teams. We're always looking for pet teams. If you have an awesome pet, and you think they'd be a good therapy pet, we, we instruct, we mentor, we educate, and we ensure. So we welcome, and we, we have so many requests, and we try to fulfill everyone, so.
That's great.
Anyway.
Thank you.
If I could, just as an example, so, one of our first grade inclusion classrooms at South Street started the year with students who didn't know each other, or how to get along with each other. So during morning meetings, the students had an opportunity to sit in the speaker's chair and talk about themselves while their classmates listened to them, and actually using our writing program, took notes about what, so, for example, Ethan would describe something that was important to him. He got Candy Land for Christmas and loved to play Candy Land, and he really liked the Gingerbread Man. The other students took notes, wrote what they heard, and then said it back, reflected back to the students. So there's a little empathy and getting to know each other. Well, at the end, right now, and this is a book signing on Friday, this coming Friday, is it 9:15 or 9:40, 9:15? I said, it sounds like you're creating a class yearbook. So that's what they did. The students wrote about themselves, created portfolios of photos with a friend or their teacher, and put in samples of their work. So every student has a page, like in a yearbook, with a story about, a picture, some drawings, and the title of the book, now, we also had it translated, is Humans of South Street and Almost Humans. Because the students felt so strongly Noel, the therapy dog, and Mr. Waffles, the therapy cat, are in their yearbook, just as an example.
That's nice.
Yeah, very sweet, very sweet. And that came from the kids. That came from the kids.
I had a funny thing happen today. I was saying to one of the kids, he's got no neck, and his head was down, and the kid says, oh, no, no, he has a neck, but he doesn't put it up like this, you know? It was the cutest thing. I was, oh, all right.
One of the real takeaways, especially with kids with behavioral challenges, is they learn gentleness. They learn how to be gentle, and they learn to modulate their voices, so that when they're reading aloud, they're, they're relaxing. And you, we see it happen every Monday, and the teachers see it happen. Also want to say, we are having Pittsburgh Public School kids join us at Ahimsa Haven in Templeton, I'm sorry, in Winchandon on the fourth Sunday of every month. We have children going up to read to these shelter cats in the cages at Ahimsa Haven. So every week, we've had some Pittsburgh Public School kids join us. And this is open to the public, 11 to 1, fourth Sunday. We have grownups who sit outside the cages, they're four-foot cages, but this helps socialize the cats, as well as helping kids with their reading. We had a boy from Learning Perspectives, he's, he usually, you know, 20 minutes, he read for an hour up in Winchandon. So this is a really powerful thing. And if we ever wanted to have a cat shelter, we should probably put it in one of our schools. Anyway, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Helen, thank you.
He's going to escape now. Right. Just before we proceed, I had left a notice at everyone's spot, and I had mentioned this, I think, at the last school committee, a couple of meetings ago. There was a group of students, I think it was three, two or three, who presented to the school committee a few meetings ago. They had developed virtual tours of the, actually, the White Mountain trip that Longchamp was going on.
Yes.
Well, and they presented at the annual Global Institute in Boston. Learn Launch and MasQ have invited Becky Colo and her team of students to present at the State House on June 5th. So this is the formal notification. I just want, we're planning to send them T-shirts representing the school and the district, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Nice. Just so you have the formal invite.
Thank you.
Getting back to the agenda, the next item is the proposed school committee meeting calendar for next year.
Require a vote, Mr. Superintendent?
It does require a vote. It is.
Yes, I, I want to make a, a suggestion to the committee that we change the regular school committee meetings from 6:30 to 6:00 P.M. Do I, if, if a formal vote is required, why don't we have a motion? Motion made? And second, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the change from 6:30 to 6:00 P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Thank you. So that would be the next, the school committee meeting will be at 6:00 P.M.
Notify the other members?
Yeah, the other members.
Next school year, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Next school year. Next school, oh, we're going to, so it'll be September?
September.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's good. Yep. How many meetings do we have last, oh?
Two.
Two more, two in June?
Yep.
That's it, huh? Okay. We have effective September. Okay, what's?
Okay, so I'm honored and proud to welcome two new principals starting July 1st in new positions, but we're really just dropping titles or changing their titles. So at this time, I'd like to invite Brittany Lavoie and Mark Pierce up to the table. In honor of graduation season, you're the first of the new principal class of 1918. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've never followed a bunny before.
So many of you have known Mark, he's a former assistant principal at Pittsburgh High School, math coach, and is recently the incoming principal over at McKay, who started on Valentine's year, the day after Valentine's. So kind of, you just showed the love for Pittsburgh. And Brittany has been working as the assistant principal here at Memorial for the last two years, and during this year has taken on more leadership responsibilities, especially with the school redesign grant that we presented to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on Friday, which is also on the agenda, so maybe when we're done talking to you, Brittany, you can stay in.
Okay.
Okay. But I just thought I'd like to have you come before the school committee, you know, recognize both of you in your new roles next year, and see if they have any questions for you, so.
I have a little job for Brittany to, to do. About 35 years ago, we buried a time capsule out front, and nobody, and nobody knows where it is right now, so.
I'll be out there digging. Don't tell someone.
We, we had a very nice conversation Saturday at the, at the Crossroads event.
Yeah.
How'd that go, by the way? Is that, I haven't seen it.
Oh, off the courtyard, it was beautiful.
Is it terrific? Did they finish it? Did they finish it? They did?
Yeah.
Great.
Took pictures this afternoon.
And then down the road is going to be the, like, waiting area for the kids, for the buses?
Yeah.
That's great. We really, we really want to, want to say thank you to Crossroads and the outstanding partnership with the community. We couldn't be happier, and.
They were all over the city Saturday.
Oh, yeah, there were many, many projects.
Twenty projects, yeah, over 20 projects.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a real army that Brian Tohms, Pastor Tohms has up there. We're lucky to, to have them partner with us. Thank you.
Is that the quote you had, between the wings?
Yeah.
Out back, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Causeway Street, yeah.
I think I just missed the beginning part, but you're, you're staying at McKay?
Yeah.
Staying at McKay.
I'll be here at Memorial. Great.
So will you have a say in, since you were the assistant principal? I mean, obviously, that position is going to become vacant on July 1st. I'm assuming you have some say in the process in the?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's good.
She's the one that hires.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's her choice.
Good.
Yeah, her choice.
Let's see, first question is to Mr. Pierce. So I saw on Facebook you all were doing Concert of Broadway songs? Did I miss something? Or is that in the after-school program, concert on June 10th?
It's the after-school program.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm thinking of. Could you talk a little bit about the, the arts and McKay and the arts innovation? Because, you know, that's something that we would really, you know, we, we haven't seen as much of that as we'd like, so.
Yeah, so I think that, that's been a question that's been asked me from a lot of the staff.
I'm sure.
So I think right now, we're in turnaround plan right now, so we've been focusing on that.
Yep.
And that is, the next steps is, how can we make arts integration more effective for students and teachers, and really bring the arts alive at McKay? So I think it's been done in pockets, but I think we, we really need to take a look at it and really start to improve on it.
Okay, that, that's great. I really look forward to hearing more, because I remember when the museum partnership school started in the 90s. And, you know, we have just so many talented kids here. It is, it is just so inspiring to, to see the levels of talent and performance and, you know, art and other, other types of creation. For Mrs. Lavoie, Ms. Lavoie?
Either one is fine.
Sounds good. So my daughter is a fifth grader entering Memorial, so I, I get to turn my attention to the Memorial PTO.
Happy to have you.
So my, my question is this, what can, what can I tell my daughter who, when I go back home, and hopefully she'll be in bed, but what can I tell her tomorrow about her new principal? What would, what would you like me to share?
That my door is always open.
Okay.
If she ever needs somebody, that she'll see me bright and early every morning outside to greet her off the bus, or wherever she gets to school.
Okay.
And, you know, that Memorial is a great place to be with a lot of very caring adults, so outside of me personally. But what you can tell her about Memorial is, is that she's going to have a great time.
That, that's great, because I, I certainly have experienced that with, you know, through the years at Memorial, that, you know, really, really strong teachers, and that's a really great message. Thank you so much.
That's the way Memorial always has been, you know, so. I remember when I was here, I put up that welcome in sign language, so.
That was you?
Yes, yes.
That was one of the first things that I noticed when I got here. Yeah.
We had, we had hearing impaired kids here that were with the CAPS collaborative, and they, when they all graduated, we didn't have any more come in. But the whole staff took a course in American Sign Language.
Fantastic.
And that was, that was around 1986, I think it was, yeah, so, lose track of time sometimes, but, yeah, so. And we used to have all the flags up of all the kids, all their nationalities that were in the school, and they were, they did them in art class.
Yeah, beautiful.
So anybody want to, and they were all put around the front. That was done before Pittsburgh High School.
That was at Pittsburgh High School as well.
Yeah, we, we did it back at Memorial back around 85, yeah, and they were there for quite a while. So I wish you much success.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can we shake your hands? Can you, can you make the round and shake our hands? Because I just think it's so cool that you're here.
Ms. Lavoie, remember what I said, too.
I will.
We've got your back here. Got it?
I know that. So I just want.
Tight classrooms, tight.
Tight.
Right? Basketball championships at McKay. That's what he's noted for, he's quite the coach.
Just focus on the ones at FHS.
So I just want to add for, for McKay, too, as we continue conversations with Pittsburgh State about what the relationship will be going forward.
Yeah.
They're busy with their budget and end of year graduations, as are we, and Mark will be at the table along with, you know, Pittsburgh High School Principal Roach, our Special Education Department, on how we can have a better relationship with the college, so.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, and Dr. Hicks is on my advisory board, so we have a connection. And we talked about just, you know, growing that relationship, you know, and they're willing to support us in a lot of different ways, so.
Yeah.
So it'll be, you should see how that grows over the next year or two. And getting, you know, with the Pittsburgh Arts Museum, too, trying to become closer to them again, and, and do some innovative things with them.
Good.
That's great.
The gate.
Yeah, just a general comment, you know, last meeting we had, you know, I believe it was Mr. Stevens that made a comment that this district is going through quite a historic moment right now, just with the amount of transition and all the change that's going on. So it's encouraging to see two principals coming up that know the ships that they're taking the helm of.
Yeah.
To see two that have been there before. So I guess, a couple of questions. What do you see as the biggest obstacle for your prospective schools? And let's just start there. What are the biggest challenges that you see facing yourselves in the first year?
I think that district-wide, it's just a matter of training up of a whole new leadership staff, making sure that we have opportunities to work together. So as we're moving the schools forward, we're moving the whole district forward in the same, in the same way.
Right. And that kind of echoes the, you know, some conversations we have in some subcommittee meetings, where it's, rather than being a just district of schools, we're a real cohesive school district. So that's an important mentality.
Right, and I think a challenge for all of us is, we're all writing these turnaround plans right now, and supporting one another as we move forward. It's all, you know, it's all, you know, groundbreaking new stuff for us in the district, so, you know, learning as we go along, and supporting one another, and, and making positive changes for the schools. And that's a, it's like setting, Superintendent Joka says, it's like setting the reset button, and, you know, and making some changes for, for our students.
It's a great start already. Mark and I have known each other through work with Mass Insight, but we have a positive working relationship, and the lines of communication are very open, and we've already helped each other problem solve quite a bit in a short time that we have been in this position, yeah.
I talked to Mr. Render, and like we said, you're all starting July 1st, and there's not going to be any baggage from the past. You're all the principals, they're all going to be starting new and be able to get on, on the same page, you know, so I think that's great.
And that's what I presented to my staff on February 14th, it's a kind of, it's a new start. February 14th was a new start.
Yeah.
And we don't look back, and we move forward, and that's what we've been doing ever since, so.
And I think, you know, one word that, I know, Mark, you mentioned this morning, and we've been talking about it a lot, maybe because we've been working on the school redesign grant so much, and, you know, with Katie here, is really collaboration, you know, whether it be collaborating amongst the principals more, and with our staff, and with the union, because it's going to take everybody working together to move our schools forward, so. And, you know, our motto is, we, our, our goal is to become the best urban district in the state.
Yep.
And actually, Memorial for their school redesign grant application changed it a little bit to be the best urban middle school in the state, so, you know, clearly, everyone's starting to, you know, focus on, on the future here, so, that's great.
A question for Mark, and you, as Principal McKay, your unique position as principal, where you have elementary.
Yes.
And middle school. So I mean, your, your duties, you obviously work with Brittany and the principal at Longchamp, but then you also work with the other elementary school. How are you adjusting to that? And I know at the Footsteps to Excellence Awards Night, a couple of weeks ago, you said it was different, different, where going from assistant principal at Pittsburgh High, where the kids are looking you in the eye to eye, and then now they grab you by around my legs and say.
It's very unique, you know, I could be talking to an eighth grader one minute, and the next day I have a kindergarten, you know, hugging my leg. So it is a little, it's a little different world for me, but it's been great. The, the kids have been very good there. The staff has welcomed me with open arms, and it's just a, it's a great place to work. And I, I just want to make sure that the staff feel every day that, you know, I have their back, and we're working hard together to, to make things positive. positive for, for not only the teachers, but the students, too. And so making it an environment, everybody wants to go to work, everybody wants to come to school. And if I can do that, things are gonna improve, so.
Thank you. Question maybe for Paula. Paula, is McKay still open as a choice citywide?
No.
No?
No. The, the neighborhood motif is in play at all the schools. Now, there are some areas that are shared.
Well, I, I was thinking more, Paula, some of the talented musical or artistic kids that, when we first started?
Right.
The museum partnership school, kids were coming from all over the city.
Right.
Because of their talent.
Right.
And I just wonder if that was still open, too?
Not, no. And, and I have to say, that whole art connection has really dissipated.
Yeah.
So in the, the primary goal right now is the turnaround work that's happening, which, I mean, McKay's was ranked in the lowest third percentile in the state. Ninety-seven percent of schools across the state perform better. So that's a little breathtaking, that's why there's a change in leadership. So that instructional piece really has to take precedence, but as Mike said, in the process, if we can reorient that, then, I mean, you can, the old art teacher speaking, you can learn a lot of academic work through the arts. Right now, that would have to be rebuilt, so I don't know what that might look like three to five years from now, but right now, that, that really isn't a strong facet in the school. There's very little connection to the art museum, and very little connection to even the arts program at Fitchburg State.
Right.
That's my impression.
Yeah.
So, so first.
Do you think it's a three to five-year process?
Well, I think the academ, I think the academic improvement has to come first.
Come first, yeah. Time frame, yeah.
And that will take a couple of years. I mean, technically, these turnaround plans, the Department of Ed is looking for a three-year process with the turnaround plans. Doesn't mean you stop and don't take any action, I mean, you build it along the way, but it's, it, it, that will need some real work.
Right, we have some things academically that we have to do first, I think, and, and we're trying to start to do those now. And then as we go along, we're gonna start to look at, how can we improve the, the arts again?
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it's a neighborhood school now, so there's, there's different students going in now, and the staff is not used to that, so, you know, that, so we have to do some PD on training on more trauma types, you know, students, and they're not used to that, so there's a learning curve for the staff there, too. So that's what we're trying to focus on first. With the arts in mind, I mean, that, that is important, and we're gonna continue to, to support that, and like I said, I have, you know, Laura from the, the Arts Museum's on my advisory board, too, so I have, like, strong connections to the art museum and Fitchburg State, so we just have to maybe rethink how we have done some of those things in the past.
And you still have the Indian Hill.
We still work on Indian Hill, yeah, which has been a great program there, and I'm meeting with them on Friday to see how, you know, what that's gonna look like next year.
Yeah.
And put, you know, maybe expanding that.
We need to grow that, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that's, so that's why I'm having a meeting on Friday with him, see how we can grow that piece.
Right. Any questions for us?
It's just, I know for me, I can speak personally, you know, that Central Staff's been very supportive of me and the change, and, and, you know, everybody's here to support our staff, and so I appreciate that and everything that they've done for us, so.
Okay, add them up, move them out.
I just asked Brittany to stay for a couple of minutes because we'll give a little debrief of our redesign grant interview.
Have fun, dude.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
So tonight, quickly, just before Brittany speaks about the redesign grant interview with Paula and myself, we just have a couple of action items. We do have one grant for $2,600 for Stars residency grant for submit and accept, and then to accept donation of $2,000 for some technology supplies for a science classroom from AFCEA Foundation, so.
Motion made. Second?
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So on Friday, Sally, Paula, myself, and Brittany, along with three other staff members from Memorial, and Rowan Demange and Alicia Boroski of our Special Education Department, drove into Malden for an interview with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the school redesign grant. It's a competitive process, or competitive grant application, where we're not necessarily competing against other districts, we're competing against a rubric in how we score on, in different categories, and the interview was an opportunity for us to tell our story beyond the grant, and also to raise our score on the rubric and perhaps get us some more money. So I think it was one of the best presentations that I've ever been a part of, from school perspective, central office, and, you know, special education, and along with that, along for the, I'll say for the ride, but also in attendance were Adam Renda, the Chief Intervention and Innovation Officer, and John Thompson, who will be the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. They were technically observers for our meeting, and although they were, I guess they were allowed to speak, they, but.
We didn't know that.
We didn't know that until the very end. So Brittany, I don't know if you wanted to share, give a summary of what you thought as, as the principal of the school applying for the, for the grant.
Yeah, it's, it's such an exciting opportunity, but, you know, one that we certainly don't take lightly. The, the Associate Commissioner had said before we left that the collective brain power that was in the room from the city of Fitchburg was impressive, is how he put it, and so that was, that was very exciting feedback. You know, I think that from the grassroots, from the Memorial staff up through the community, I think that people are really engaged in our turnaround efforts already. We've, like the other schools, we've spent a lot of time planning, but we've been able to really put some of this into action already this year. We're impatiently awaiting mid-June when we find out if we get the grant. I think that based on our performance, we anticipate some level of funding.
What is that, is it DESI?
Yeah, the Department of Ed, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we're looking forward to that feedback, but the, the Memorial staff and the collaboration with Central Office was, it was fantastic, was very well prepared, and we feel very confident leaving that meeting.
Paula, you wanna?
It, it was interesting. I think the Associate Commissioner, Ventura Rodriguez, was on the panel. Michael Seymour was from the Department of Ed, and he heads up the group that manages turnaround practice groups like SSOS and DSEC, those folks. He didn't actually ask any questions, but he was the timekeeper. And then they had an outside consultant to also ask questions, part of the panel. The questions they asked, and we had a, I think we had a, it's about an 80-page document, but they asked questions that needed, they wanted more detail or clarification, and there were a couple of areas that came through about equity and cultural responsiveness, and about students, what would students expect to be different on the first day of the new school year? And I think those questions, we answered them, but I know coming away, I was eavesdropping, it's kind of like, okay, our first job was to get this document in.
Yeah.
The next job is to say, we need to now have, it's almost like a case study, what will things look like for kids? Just like Sally's saying, what do I tell my daughter? What will be different on the first day of school? And again, there were answers to that question, but I think it just, the, very nicely, they were provocative about how to make this real. You know, it's an 80-page document full of budgets and theory, but you're talking about 750 students and another 60 professionals who come to work here every day, what's gonna be different so it's better? I think Mike said it well, we want teaching to be so successful, teachers want to come to work, and kids to be so connected to the school, they don't want to miss a day. And they don't want to blow out of a class. What is that gonna look like for that to happen? So I think, I think it'll be really a great opportunity for Memorial.
So Memorial was the first school to make a presentation or have their interview with DESI, and DESI will be interviewing other schools this week and next. So then the first week of June, they'll review all the rubrics, and that's when, the second week of June, the decisions are made, and apparently it goes all the way up to, I don't know if it's necessarily the governor, but, you know, Commissioner Riley will sign off on all these awards.
Do you know how many they fund in a year, or is it varies from year to year?
Up to eight.
Up to eight, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add in, 'cause I was taking notes about their, their questions, and they had really specific EdU speak questions about theory of instruction, and our group was able to answer the, you know, very precise questions with a fair degree of both amplitude and specificity. So just gauging, obviously, they're gonna ask us the same questions that they're gonna ask every other school district that comes before them, but they also asked about how we're gonna improve on 30, 60, and 90 days out, and what are we gonna evaluate for the evidence? And, you know, the fact that what I was observing as the sort of layperson, so to speak, in the room, was that everyone from Memorial, the four representatives, all spoke in harmony with each other. They were able to, you know, add to points that had been brought up, and it was a really well-coordinated presentation. I, again, I, I felt like I've never been at DESI before, and it's a very different feeling, like the temperature in the room is a little bit different from, from our school committee. There's, there's a different kind of collegial, collegiality, and, you know, the three people that were reviewing asked questions, you know, how do you get the right leaders and staff? So they asked questions where you could answer in very vague ways, but we, we didn't, you know, we used really specific responses. And we also told them very frankly about our high-needs population, which is what we really need the most funding for, because that's our reality. It's, you know, we have these schools in the bottom, and then we have a lot of very high-need students. So they did respond to that, and because we were able to make certain points more than once, I, I felt like they were paying attention, and I've actually, I wrote to Michael Seymour afterwards a pretty detailed letter about Fitchburg, and he wrote back a very detailed letter to me, so we're corresponding a little bit, and I, I think that the, you know, the will is there, and them seeing a very well-coordinated team, a really professional team of education professionals and teachers, and administrators and instructors, there was nothing we didn't, there, there was no pause. Everything was responded to really well. So that was my view, and I was there as a parent, it's like, yeah, my trial's going there, so I have a stake in the game.
Yeah.
So hopefully we set a very high bar for the other applicants, and now we, we wait.
Yeah, we wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good way to jump right in, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so tonight, the last item under budget items is FY '20 budget. I have no updates, further updates at this time. The first meeting in June, June 3rd is the scheduled final hearing. You know, as we're going through all these turnaround plans and needs, there may be a little bit of shifting, so I will try to let you know if there is any difference or change from the first hearing before that next meeting in June.
I want to applaud you, Bob, and the, and the team, along with the school committee as well. I'm looking at capital improvement line item, and you know that's been a source of, of focus and concern, the condition of our buildings over the last year. So what we're doing in this year's budget is pretty significant, I mean, it's, we still need to do more, and we'll work in that direction, I'm sure, in the future, but we're going from $50,000 that we've appropriated in the past in that line item to $600,000. That's pretty impressive, and I appreciate that, and I think the people out in the community should be, should be pleased with this first step. I think we, we need to build a substantial line item that will address those, those needs as they, as they become available. And we're gonna be looking at someone that's gonna focus just on capital needs in all city buildings, none the least of which, of course, you have the lion's share with nine, is it nine buildings? I think, isn't it?
About seven, we lease one.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So that's, that's good to see that, and we're hoping to, to add to that in the future. Thank you. Okay, action items, we, did we approve the $2,000 and $2,000, $2,600 appropriations, right, donations, I should say?
Yeah.
We just did, okay, so if we bundle the other action items, 19-1161, 19-1162, 19-1163, 19-1166.